Start with what we just stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess change it up over the night. First item will be Oklahoma office. Bill will be swearing in. Also members Brent Byers, Jeremiah Olgin, and myself Mayor King.
Alrighty, we'll start with Mayor King, so you can keep cheering. Sure. If I can have you raise your right hand.
Which hand is my right?
And repeat after me. I Jimmy John King.
I Jimmy John King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
Of the city of Stewartville.
City of Stewartville.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome back.
Apparently we lowered our expectations.
Alright, this time we did you first last time. We'll do Jeremiah first this time. All set?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
If you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Jeremiah Olgin.
I Jeremiah Olgin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome back. Alright, after just being in Washington. Will I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I Brent Byer.
I Brent Byer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution.
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome back. After the meeting, I'll have you guys sign these for, um, one for yourselves and one for our archives.
General one picture.
Thank you.
Alright, get that out of the way. Now we'll do call order roll call. Starting with Mayor range.
Councilperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Olgin. Looking for approval of the night's agenda? Any other staff?
Here we go, monster.
Move to approve.
Motion and motion and a second. Motion and a second to approve all papers out.
I oppose.
Carry. Approval of council meeting minutes. When was the last time? Regular meeting minutes of December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Anything you see on there that you don't like?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. That will carry. That'll take us on to finance and budget. We've got the accounts payable and the accounts additional listed there. Have any questions? You can direct them to the administrator or shed down.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the accounts payable. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or problems either? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. That'll take us into motions and general business. First item under motions and general business tonight is, uh, mayor's appointments and meeting schedules. Mayor King has submitted his twenty twenty-five appointments and designations for consideration. The council board's commission meeting schedule is also part of this packet. Please note that November twelfth meeting is a Wednesday due to Veterans Day following on Tuesday, November eleventh. It's all in front of you. If you have any questions or discussions. Now's the time for it. If not, we'll be looking for approval of the, uh, twenty twenty-five appointments and twenty twenty-five council board commission meeting schedule. As submitted, that can all be done as one motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. That takes us to First American Insurance, regulation of age and municipal tort liability. Alicia Nelson from First American Insurance is attending the meeting to give us an overall review of the twenty twenty-four insurance coverage and discuss the municipal tort liability options. And when you've done speaking, then we'll go on to make our motions. Take it over.
Good evening. So my agency represents the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which is the, um, insurance company that the city is represented by. Um, each year they take the gross earned premium from all of the cities and municipalities that they cover. And they divide that by the losses that they experienced in that year. And that's how they determine dividends. And so this year, the city of Stewartville, um, has a return coming, a return dividend on the premium that they paid. Um, the property casualty dividend that the city received was six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the work comp dividend was seven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. The responsible higher end planning and training practices of the city equates to lower claims experience. And there's an experience modification that is calculated each year. Um, and that is how they determine credits and debit system to your upcoming premium. Certainly, there's increases in rates that have to do with, um, the risk overall. There's increases that you guys take by adding new property or having additional risks. But the experience modification is a direct reflection of the, the claims activity or lack thereof that you guys have had in the previous years. Uh, a, a one is an absolute base factor, so that's not neither a credit or a debit. That might indicate that there's been some claims in the past. Uh, less than one is going to be that you've had so few claims that you're actually getting a credit off your premium. Um, and in your case, your liability experience mod for this upcoming year is a point nine one, so that's a credit effect on your incoming premium. And it's a flat one for your auto mod, your experience mod on your, your commercial liability. So that indicates that, you know, there has been a claim in the last couple of years. Nothing major because it's not a, um, a debit to the policy. It's just, or, uh, it's just a flat charge at this point. We don't have the rates calculated for twenty twenty-five yet. We've been working all of those details out, but, um, overall, the league is, is seeing an eight percent de- decrease in both liability and property rates, so that's great. And as you mentioned about the tort liability, each year the city council votes on tort liability, whether to waive it or not to waive the tort liability limits. What this means is that, um, typically historically, the city has always voted to not waive liability limits. And in doing so, that means that a single claimant that brings claim against the city could only recover five hundred thousand, up to five hundred thousand of the city's two million dollar liability limit. And so my question to you is if you choose to waive it or do not waive it. And do not waive it is what you've chosen in the past. That's all I've got.
That's all we got. Any questions for Alicia? Counsel? Alright.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the first motion will be approving Alicia Nelson as the city's insurance agent for twenty twenty-five. We have a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. Second motion is to approve or deny resolution.
I'll make a motion that we do not waive the monetary limits.
We have a second to do not waive the monetary limits.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Do you rate? Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. There. That's simple.
You get to go.
He's busy.
You're excused. No, thank you for coming. Thank you for all of the people.
Well, before, before Alicia goes, this is just our public chance to say thank you. We appreciate your response to any of our departments when we call up either a question or in the event of a claim to, um, Alicia and her staff are good about helping us out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, next item on our agenda. Yep, should be the public hearing. Annexation hearing. The city of Stewartville has been petitioned to annex three tracts of land into the city. A public hearing will be held this time to consider any comments, objections to annexation. Uh, I'm gonna close the regular meeting now, but the public hearing.
There, I got mine back. Thank you.
Alright, do you want me to read all three sites first or go through one at a time?
You can, you can read them all at once and the motion can be all at once unless there's a, um, a problem with.
We're now in public hearings, so site one is, uh, Eleventh Avenue northwest, south of Tenth Street northwest, owner I Forest Township. I'm not gonna read the whole legal description. Site two is twenty-five sixteen Seventh Avenue northeast, Schuman Family Trust Homestead, owner Schuman Family Trust. And site three is twenty-three point three five acres property north of Schuman Business Park, does not include the peer pleasure building site. Owner is no coming closure. Alright, do we have any questions or discussion from the public? Do we have any written oral comments?
No.
Do we have anything, any, well, here are any questions on any of these properties? And the president and for the staff. If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Back to our regular meeting. I Forest Township Board approved this resolution to annex the above at their January seventh meeting. Bill and I were there. So council action requested from us tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one. A resolution between the city of Stewartville and I Forest Township extending the corporate limits of the city of Stewartville. We can do all three under one motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have any other questions before we go further, Greg?
Nothing.
Do we have a motion on these three sites?
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. So that'll take us on to our next in the general development plan update, six subdivision preliminary plat. And any of you would like, you're more than welcome to take off.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you for driving down. General development plan update and six subdivision preliminary plat. GDP revision and replat Schumann's Business Park six. The planning commission held a public hearing on one seven revised Schumann Business Park general development plat and review the preliminary plat for the six subdivision. The plat consists of the extension of Second Avenue Northwest. From a quick trip to the north end of the Schumann property. This area will consist of eight lots, which is on B two Highway Commercial. City engineer Obernolte has reviewed the plats for compliance with their subdivision ordinance. A response letter revised plat has been submitted by Schumann's engineer Dan Horsh. Horsh will be intended to answer any questions. The planning commission is recommending approval subject to city engineer Obernolte's review. So the motion's going to be approval of the revised GDP and preliminary plat for Schumann's Business Park six, but now's the time for discussion or questions.
Unless the area was just annexed or released.
Uh, understand.
I understand.
Yeah.
So it includes that area. So is that rolling, getting it put in right away or not? Just out of curiosity.
Does it roll? Does he put it right away?
Oh, yeah.
A portion of it.
Portion.
Any other questions for Dan or Jenna or Marv or staff?
So Jenna, did you?
This is actually Mark, not Dan.
I'm filling in with Dan.
Oh, okay.
Mark.
Jenna, at the planning and zoning, the motion that was made, uh, was made pending your review of their responses and and approval. And I haven't heard anything.
I have not been, had time to review their responses, so it has not been reviewed or reviewed yet.
So your motion could be subject to the approval.
Just like we did with the planning and zoning. Well, we can motion to approve it pending your final approval.
What motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. Thank you. And forgive my mistake.
I don't like Sam, whatever.
For, for the counsel, this is Mark. He actually is your, um, surveyor that does a lot of the work for the state, so this is your first time actually meeting him.
He's a surveyor for?
That for SEH. He does a lot of the work for the city, actually.
Right. Well, I didn't get tuned into that before, so that's my fault. So that takes us on to personnel. Finance officer description and approval to advertise. So if you guys wanna plug in, you can to.
I'll stay.
I'm gonna stay.
Alright, yeah, you can.
I'm gonna stay.
Alright, you're more than welcome to stay.
You're not gonna make it to the end.
I wanna hear it.
You're not gonna make it to the end of the meeting.
What's that?
I'll bet you make it five minutes.
I think there's an item with last minutes too.
As you are aware, in light of finance director strain moving onto Homestead County, the personnel committee agreed to replace the position with a finance officer. This was a position which was established in the past prior to new bar moving into the finance director position and which doesn't require municipal accounting as we believe that is as limited applicants as it has in the past. Attached, please find the updated job description for your review, which is in there. And we'll make the motion. It will be a motion to approve the updated finance officer description and to authorize the advertisement of the same. So if you have any questions or discussion on this, now's the time for that. I believe Bill's already out of the last.
Yeah, I sent out previous notice to all of you, especially to Josh and, um, Craig. And so Craig, or Josh had sent some comments back that this made sense. Um, and, um, it has worked in the past for us when Barb was here. And so we'd like to try that again. And then, uh, as we pointed out, it gives a potential chance for promotion down.
Alright, we're looking for a motion.
This, how long are you gonna advertise it for, Bill? Or is it advertised at?
Uh, we usually do local for sure. And then, um, we'll, I guess it's up to.
The Lake of Minnesota city site. And then, um, baseball.
Our social network.
Alright, we'll look at proof. We have a motion to approve the updated finance description and authorize advertising. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. That'll take us into SEH supplemental agreement, Highway sixty-three and Schuman Drive traffic signal project. Staff have been working with MINDOT district engineers as a follow-up to the traffic study ICE report submitted in two thousand eighteen. SEH has submitted a supplemental letter agreement which authorizes and describes the scope, schedule, and payment conditions for consultants' work at Highway sixty-three and Schuman Drive temporary single design and safety improvements. It is anticipated that these improvements will be eligible for MINDOT local partnership program funding for the construction of the safety improvements being implemented through Iowa sixty-three. Schedule would be to have the project designed and advertised for bids by July with contract approval in August. The fee is outwardly estimated that to be eighty-five thousand, including expenses and equipment. So the council action requested would be to authorize city administrative shimmel to sign the supplemental letter agreement. Questions or discussion on that? Brian, looks like you wanna jump in here and say the county will throw a bunch of money at this.
I'll keep that mic.
I thought you were ready to say that, but. Questions, discussion?
Quicker we get it done and better.
You bet, yeah. Alright, then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to authorize administrative shimmel. Do we have a second?
What have you guys got to do, John, to? I mean, we can just put a couple of poles in the ground and hang it like.
There's a little more to this one, um, because the requirements, um, from the state, there is not just a signal being designed.
Oh, what?
There's not just a signal being designed that is included in the description of the contract. Um, and also in the description of what we are applying for the LTP funding for.
I'll second it, by the way.
Wait, a motion? Do we have a second? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. Alright, next item, resolution voter account agreement. This is what the county wants to give us a bunch of money.
This is, this is, they wanna keep all money.
During each election year, the Secretary of State distributes funds to each county for election purposes. State statute allows for local governments to use the funds allocated for expenses directly related to election administration. Homestead County is required to work with the local units of government to determine how the funds will be allocated within the county. The city could allow Homestead County to retain all the funds. Staff has recommended we use our portion of the funds to offset the costs associated with election judges. And that we hereby disagree to allow Homestead County to annually retain all voting operations, technology, and election resources account funds received. Does that understand? We're gonna disagree to allow them. To approve, the council action will be to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one voting operations, technology, and election resources voter account agreement. Do we have to put in there disagree? We just?
No, the resolution says that.
Okay. Questions?
Is this a new rule or another?
Yes, it is.
So this is kinda like the tort liability thing. We have to disagree in order to get the money.
In the past, they just asked us, um, but now they want a formal resolution, so.
Motion?
I'll move that we approve the resolution, disagreeing.
Well, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That also carries. Civic center updates. HVAC replacement. There were multiple bids submitted for the HVAC replacement for the civic center. Number one was Wickers at one hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred sixty-seven, Matt Muller at eighty thousand six hundred. Superior Mechanical came in at sixty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-five. And Ahearn came in at eighty-four thousand three hundred. Staff has recommended that we use the lowest bidder, Superior Mechanical, to do the replacement. So the council action requested will be to approve or deny lowest bidder, Superior Mechanical, for the HVAC replacement at the civic center. Questions or discussion?
When, how soon will they start?
It'll be in conjunction with the roofing, a coordinated, coordinated effort between the two when they fix roof, probably in May or June.
These prices are good for the next six months. They're not gonna come back and say, I think it's gone off.
So there is a refrigerant change in this timeframe. Uh, we need to get going on this to get the old style, which is what everyone is recommending. To get the old because the new one comes in, get the kinks all aired out of it. So they cannot produce anymore after two thousand twenty-five, but they can sell what they have on hand. So we want to get going on this sooner than later to get that older style. And we will have to store them, probably pay for them upfront and store them on the facility until installation time.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve Superior Mechanical for HVAC replacement.
Wait, hold. One second. So if you look at the, the prices on there, there are a couple of add-on things that could possibly be added. But with the low bidder, there weren't enough, and it's like the curbs and stuff like that, it could be three hundred dollars more per unit. It wasn't that much of an expense, but that was not included in this, and we'll see at the time when we do it. But it still puts them as quite significantly lower on the bid.
Alright, your motion standing, Brent?
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Takes us on to public works equipment. They not done yet?
I'm getting cold. Okay, you're washed.
Let's see. Staff has recommended purchasing a stand on spreader sprayer that will be used on all grounds of the curb lines of the streets. The bid is attached. It's less than state contracted pricing for this item. Keep the bid there before you. So do we have any questions or discussions for public works?
I'm moving to approve the purchase.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. That takes us right out of the, all this stuff, Marv, and now we're in mayor's staff and consultant reports.
Permission to leave?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Marv. Tonight's mayor's report. I hope everyone had a good holidays, enjoyed yourself with their friends and families, had a good time. We've been gone for a while. Tonight, we're gonna send our sympathies to the families of Rex Kellner, Roy Pritz, Patricia Card Kane, Harlan Rankin, and Baby Car. Don't forget, our winter sports figures are in the thick of all their competitions too. They're all striving to reach the goals that all the other teams have done so far, so keep cheering them on. They're doing a great job. Don't forget, there's bingo every Wednesday at the American Legion and Tuesdays at Cars Bar and Growth. I can't stress this more, that we, we've been stressing and stressing for years, and now you better do it, the sign up for code red. That's the Stewartville alert system for when we plow the streets. There used to be some forgiveness on this, but there's no longer going to be. We've had many opportunities, everyone in the public, to sign up for it. If you have questions, contact us. But I would get signed up for it because we know it's gonna snow one of these days. So please do that.
Cheryl, how they sign up? Can you tell everybody?
Um, they go to our city website. Right up on top, there's a heading. It says sign up for code red. Uh, if they click on that, it'll take them to the Homestead County site, and then there's a kind of a form that they fill out. One important thing is remember your password, because if you wanna change your notification, um, the way you're getting an email or text, um, you need to know that password. And the other thing is, um, it'll ask for alerts that you want, and click on that and get Stewartville.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, and my congratulations to Jeremiah and Brent for once again getting reelected. Well, with that, I'm Don Eagles, the city administrator's report.
Uh, reports in your packet, and then I've got an attachment this time, and it's just for informational, uh, keep you all updated on, um, what sites are available, development opportunities along the housing area. As you know, we participated in a regional housing summit. what sites are available, development opportunities along the housing area. As you know, we participated in a regional housing summit, uh, this fall. And so then Sandra went ahead and compiled all this information, at least in an updated format, so if you ever get calls, um, you can be aware of where a few things along these lines are happening around town, so.
All right, any questions for Mr.? All right, thank you, Bill. No Finance Director, unless you have something to fill in, Bill?
Um, nope, Bill Est was there. Um, obviously, we'll start working on the improvements and, um, try to take care of things. Um, um, our auditors said they'll help out, um, whatever deal during the transition, so that's good news for us, and obviously, they'll be starting, uh, in, uh, more thoroughly on the audit, so that'll be coming up next in our finance world, so.
All right, thanks, Bill. Public Works Director Report.
Uh, there's a report in there. One thing I wanted to discuss with you guys, we had discussed, the plumbing in the control room at the wastewater plant. Uh, bids did not come in in time to get them put on the agenda, but because this is a maintenance issue that we wanna get going on in relatively ti- quick timeframe, uh, we did get two bids. Uh, the low bid was Joseph Companies at a hundred and seven thousand. We'd worked with them previously, so we're going to move ahead with having them come in and start tearing that control room apart and replacing stuff in there. If you remember, it's because of the conditions of the pipe in there that if we lose, uh, it could be catastrophic for that work, so. And we wanna do it during the low flow levels, which would be February would be a perfect month to do it, so.
Sean, I have a question over here. I see, uh, about cleaning the ponds in Maple Brook.
Yep.
Then we just, is, those are the same ponds we got complaints about this past spring or summer?
We've had comments on, they want us to keep doing mowing over there, but I have spoken with, uh, soil and water as to what we can do. At the time they built that, there was some finagling going on between the fierce development there at the time, and that was all designated wetlands and they, uh, I can't remember exactly what they called it, but they are not supposed to be able to mow and do all the stuff there that they want us to do. So, we are having a meeting with them tomorrow to discuss the things we are capable of doing there, and it's not the amount that they would like, but that's out of our control and that's been.
So that pond is designated different than the other ponds in town we take care of?
Well, we can clean the pond out, which we did. So we cleaned the pond out. It's more the waterway along it and stuff like that. They want us to mow regularly, and we cannot do that. They're telling us we're not supposed to. It's in rain.
Is, I know, is that, I'm, is that the?
There's actually three ponds. The one that we're questioning that the Maple Brook Association is, that's the closest one to their town homes. Then there's two other ones, and that's the one that Tom Graff has come and complained about mowing around.
And that's the pond we're talking about?
No, actually, the one we're talking about right now was the front one closer to I with her.
Okay. I had my run that I just remembered.
Okay, and I couldn't remember which one you were, site you were coming from, because we've had comments on.
But that wetland area does go back behind the times, so that is.
Technically, we are not supposed to finish mow that. We, 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 they can control mow it as far as two to three times a year to prevent tree brush and stuff like that growing, but we are not supposed to finish mow that, they tell us.
Okay. We should probably put Tom in contact with them.
Oh, we can all have a worry.
Any other questions for Public Works Director here? Hearing none. Thanks a lot, Sean. Tell the guys, keep it up.
Thank you.
City Engineer Jenna, you got a report?
Sure, um, looking to bring our plans to you for the CIP project at the next meeting for approval and setting asking to advertise and set the date. Um, we are moving forward on legacy. Um, we do need some, um, instruction as to parameters of what we are supposed to be designing sanitary sewer for, um, to go under legacy, um, what our full intent of outreach is going to be. So that everything is designed correctly. That's kinda where we're at in that design. We'll start moving forward with the Signal Project. Keep working on a lot of reviews and development projects, and, um, we will be submitting the funding application for the LPP grant for that Signal Project tomorrow, so. Few things happening.
11th Avenue, there's no underground work, is there Jenna?
Star sort.
Yeah, there's one there.
We have to extend that box cover.
All right, any other questions for engineer? Thank you, Jenna. Keep up the good work. Uh, Library Director not here, Fire Chief not here, Pool Director's not here, wow.
Fire Chief's rotation, he's got his report.
Yep, that takes, you got his report.
No, it's just that, recognize it was in the packets.
Committee Commissioner and Board reports, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, he got a banquet invite in there, and they've got Winter Fest coming up in February. Do they still got time to sign up for the banquet, Bill?
Yep, let us know, and you and guest can attend on our behalf for representing the city, so.
All right.
Probably within this next, uh, week, so.
Okay. EDA HRA meeting next Tuesday. Finance? What meeting scheduled right now?
Nope.
Library?
Uh, we don't meet till next month.
Park Board?
Um, that last night. Um, had a little presentation from Girl Scouts about that houses that they wanna build and put up in a couple of the parks. Learned a lot about bats. And, uh, elected officers.
Personnel? Lighting's only.
Two minutes are in there.
Public Safety? Do the calls for service, all the 2024 calls here and there?
Yeah, Justin did wanna go through, um, past prior years, not prior years, not past prior years. Um, I think he told me this morning that our calls went up, only a hundred call, calls, um, from twenty-three to twenty-four. So, but he had twenty-two in there. So nothing too concerning.
All right, Public Works. Ready?
Uh, no report other than to add what I mentioned about the housing study. That is in coordination with the county. They're helping subsidize, um, a countywide housing study, and then each of us, ring cities, get to play a little part of it. Of course, that saves us a lot of money because some of the base information would be the same for all of us. So the county's agreed to pick that up, and then we'll pay basically our prorated portions. Since it falls on our development.
You want to call?
Uh, no report. Meeting coming up two weeks.
Transit Advisory Committee, and you got reappointed, Dan.
Thank you very much. No report.
Communications, and the thank you for doing. We got a communication, and you got a message from Jim Penny. Uh, must be coming up on the Smith. No, well, he'll be ready to be.
Yep, he's gonna be the main speaker.
Does anyone here wanna speak? Does our surveyor wanna say anything?
Just hello.
Okay.
Lincoln, what should we adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? First one down on twenty-five.